At this time, I would ask that all would stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth, would you please call a roll?
Grantquist?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
Okay, and at this time, before we proceed with the regular agenda and the consent agenda motions, and that, I would like to introduce Mr. Steve Ramus. He is the interim city engineer. Steve, if you would stand so that people can put a face to the name. If you remember the last meeting that we had, signed some agreements with him in that, so we will be throwing him into the fire tonight with some questions, I'm sure. So, at this time, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda with the removal of item number 15, which has been requested to be removed from the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda. So moved?
Second.
Okay, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
And I ask for a motion for approval of the regular agenda with addition of item number 15, which was on the consent agenda. So moved?
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that's gonna take us down, take us to special presentations. Item number 20 on the agenda, and the presentation that we have is the city of Norfolk's 2017 Comprehensive Development Program. And at this time, Jan, do you wanna?
Yes. Thank you. I'm Jan Merrill with Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, and the purpose of the 2017 City of Norfolk's Comprehensive Development Study was to identify neighborhood needs that will stabilize and enhance a targeted area benefiting low-to-modern income residents as a result. Similar study was conducted by the city in 2005, 2009, and 2013, and those three grants produced almost $3.4 million in various improvements, with over $1.9 million in CDBG funds and over $1.5 million in local matching funds. The targeted area was identified by North Nebraska Economic Development, and it consists of six neighborhoods located within the city. The first neighborhood is Neighborhood A and extends from Prospect Street to Norfolk Avenue, with 18th Street on the west and 12th Street on the east. And there is a population of 362 persons with an LMI of 54.91. Neighborhood B extends from the southern border of 9th Street west to 13th Street to Norfolk Avenue and then east to 12th Street. It includes from Hayes on the north and Prospect Avenue. The total population is 1,163 persons, and the LMI for that area is 48.42. Neighborhood C extends from 1st Street west to 9th Street and from Pazwalk Avenue north to Prospect Avenue. The population is 1,787, and the LMI is 58.7. Neighborhood D extends from Michigan Avenue to Hayes and from 9th Street on the west to 13th Street. The population is 1,215, and the LMI for the area is 73.83. Neighborhood E extends from 1st Street west to 9th Street and from Michigan to Pazwalk. The total population is 902, and the LMI is 47.74. And the last neighborhood extends from Omaha Avenue to Michigan and is from 1st Street to 9th Street, and the population is 655 with an LMI of 52.87. So when you combine all the neighborhoods, the average LMI of the six neighborhoods is 55.57. And during the initial collection of phase of the, where we did surveys and town hall meetings, which we've had the citizens and city staff participating, we also used the online Survey Monkey to utilize, was utilized to gather input from the targeted residents and from the city staff. We had a total of 295 surveys returned, with 251 from the residents and 45 from the city staff. We held four town hall meetings. The activities that were identified that had high priority through the surveys and the town hall meetings was streets, street maintenance, street conditions, disrepair, and lack of property upkeep, the availability of jobs, storm sewers, youth center, and community center. And although the availability of jobs and the disrepair and lack of property upkeep were listed as top priorities, they are not eligible for CDG programs, but these priorities were listed in the study so that the city of Norfolk might be able to address these issues through other avenues and other fundings. Once the needs and the priorities were identified, a work plan was developed. The city of Norfolk, with the assistance of Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District, identified community priorities and prepared a two-year strategy to improve the targeted area. Over the course of the two-year CD funding year, the city of Norfolk will apply for a grant to make street sewer and water lines improvements within the targeted area. The following project was identified through the city's one- and six-year improvement plan and is going to, we're gonna use that for an application. And that would be the reconstruction of Brosch Avenue between 1st and 5th Street. The water main replacement and the sewer replacements is also looked at in that area. At the conclusion of the Phase Two, Year Two, it is anticipated that $1,007,000 will be invested in the targeted area. Overall, it appears that the city of Norfolk will be able to implement several key revitalization projects within the target area if they participate in the CD program. And that's what I have. Any questions?
Questions or comments? But Pierce, as this is, you know, as it's been used in the past and moving on forward, it's a vital tool for us to help redevelop some lower-income areas that way and aging areas, so thank you for all your work you've done on it that way.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us into item 21 on the agenda. This is a public hearing to consider the application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for $350,000 of CDBG funds for the Comprehensive Development Phase Two project to be used for infrastructure improvements on Brosch Avenue between 1st Street and 5th Street. That's, we've got Jan, you touched on it a little bit, I believe, in your presentation.
Yeah, and then this is the result of what? The priorities of the study. And we met with the city, and we determined that we'd like to apply for is 350,000 of CDG Comprehensive Development Phase Two funds, for which $307,000 will be used for infrastructure improvements of the street water mains and sewers on Brosch Avenue between 1st and 5th Street. $35,000 will be used for general admin, administration, and $8,000 will be used for construction management. There'll be a local matching funds of $76,700, and that will be provided by the city of Norfolk. The grant will also require additional leverage of $76,700, and that will also be done within the targeted area. The total program cost is $503,500, and all activities will be used in that targeted area.
Jan, what's the timeline typically for seeing this through?
This is a two-year project. The hope is, the CD grant actually is two two-year projects, and they overlap, so it'll go 2018, 2019, and then 2019 and 2020. Our hope is that we'll do the engineering and all the prep for this project in 2018, and then first thing, 2019, we'll have an identical grant. We have to apply for it again, but that's the hope, and then we'll have the total amount going to that project.
Thank you. Other questions?
So Jan, there's no problems with that grant carrying over if we don't get it all done in that season?
It's a two-year program, and if we don't get it done, we can apply for an extension. There's never a guarantee, but I-
I don't think we've ever ran into that, but if there was a reason-
We've applied for grants, or for extensions in the past, and we've always been granted them.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. I ask if there is anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of this item. Is there any discussion from the council? Not been. At this time, I would close the public hearing. And look for consideration, or motion for consideration of resolution 2017-57 authorizing to sign and forward an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for $350,000 of community development block grant funds for the Comprehensive Development Phase Two project to be used for infrastructure improvements on Brosch Avenue between 1st and 5th Street, and to proceed with the formulation of any all contracts and documents or other memoranda to effect acceptance of the grant application. I'd offer for consideration Resolution 2017-57.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, I would call for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2017-57 is adopted.
The next item on the agenda then also is a public hearing on the 16th CD-05 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG project available to local governments for community and economic development activities. Like to open this public hearing, and I believe, Jan?
This is a second public hearing, which is required for each CDBG-funded project to obtain citizen input, comments, and opinions with regards to the performance of the grant. For the 16CD 2005, the city of Norfolk was awarded $26,400, of which forced the CDBG Comprehensive Development Phase One funds, of which $23,400 was used to conduct a planning study and determine future projects. $3,000 was used for general admin. To the date of the, to date, the cost of the study is approximately only $10,000, and it's been 1,600 has been used for grant administration, so we're way under budget on that. Local matching funds is 25%, and there's also a local leverage that is 25%. That was estimated at 12,600, but it'll be much less now.
Questions from the council?
Under budget's good.
Under budget's always good.
Always good.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak either in support or in opposition or has comments regarding this item? If not, at this time, I would close the public hearing. That takes care of that item, so. The next item then is a public hearing at the request of Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation to consider a zoning change from I-1 light industrial and R-1 single-family residential to R-2 on property generally located at and around 601 East Michigan Avenue. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing and ask if have someone in, if anyone in the audience wants to come and address this, who wants to speak in favor of this.
Well, I think we ought to just have Jan continue the show. She's done such an eloquent job doing it, so.
No, give me a break.
Tom, thank you for allowing her to do that. Hello, council. I'm Mark Zimmer, President and CEO of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm actually representing the Greater Norfolk Foundation today with the request to change zoning from I-1 and R-1 to a least restrictive, least dense R-2. So we're very excited about this opportunity to partner with Greater, or with the Elkhorn Valley Community Development, or Neighbor Works. As you know, he has a project listed of 28 detached single-family homes, a price range of 225,000 to 240,000; 22 attached, single-family homes from 190,000 to 210,000, which we feel hits a niche market here in Norfolk when we talk about the need for workforce housing. And I do want to go back to kind of bring back the 2016 housing study that was conducted here. One of the action items in Section Six was to provide, to create a community-wide housing partnership because there was such a need for housing in Norfolk, and I think that's exactly what we did here with the foundation, partnering with Neighbor Works to come up with this development. And so that was just one thing that we looked at when forming this partnership. And then we looked at also in Section Five, we looked at the land use projections for Norfolk. We looked at an estimated, they said here, by 2021, we'd need an estimated 220 acres of land to create the housing that we will need by that time. 222 acres in Norfolk is not easy to find, especially when you're looking at areas within the city limits, it's even harder. So at some point in time, this, these landlocked areas or these places of, these tracts of land inside the city limits have to be looked at for development, and I think this really fits the need with this 10 acres. They're estimating that 512 housing units will be need to be developed for non-elderly family ages 18 to 54, requiring an estimated 151 acres just for those housing units. So you can see, this is definitely meeting the need of a projected housing, housing project here in Norfolk. Also, we looked at Action Item Six, and this was to create a housing land bank. Well, in fact, that's what I believe the Greater Norfolk Foundation has done. We had this land, was identified as industrial use, to have it ready for industrial projects when they came, but guess what? We found the need was to address our housing market, much more so than to recruit another industry into that area. So it's a very attractive piece of land for that. We were able to give it to them at a good cost so they can hit that niche market within the workforce housing sector. And I think, you know, with me representing 650 businesses, I think you're gonna hear from some today about what the housing need is in Norfolk. And so I guess I will let Roger kind of talk about what this project will look like and his partnership in that, but we couldn't be more excited about the opportunity to use this land for housing at this time. So, thank you. Entertaining questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I'm Roger Nadrick. I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska. It's based here in Norfolk, as well as we have a second office in Columbus. Employees, seven staff members, serving seven counties here in the northeast area of Nebraska. And we've been doing this since 1994. We've done some developments in other communities, and by far, we've done majority of a purchase, resale program here in Norfolk, where we've improved over 312 homes in proper Norfolk, as well as added 70 new homes through partnerships in the Norfolk area. I'm here today representing Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska. We have formed a partnership with Kelby Herman Progressive Builders, and Kelby is in the audience here as well, so if there's questions, I'm sure he can help address those questions as well. The third partner is Cliff and Kathy Mezner with Mezner Development Company, and these two partners will really help jumpstart and move this project along with our organization. Kelby has been in the business over 10 years of actually constructing homes in northeast area and other commercial properties. The Mezners have been, they're based in Central City, and they've been doing this for 25 years, and all the way from, you know, lower-income homes to market-rate homes, elderly apartment complexes, whatever. But I've known the Mezners for all those 25 years since I've been in this industry and are great partners to pull together, to work on this together. And we're also working with the same partners of the proposed project in Columbus as well. And so the timeline there, as far as our experiences, what I want to talk a little bit as far as, you know, the workforce housing, as Mark addressed, the housing study that was just completed last year. One more stat that I want to share with you, a statistic, is on the target price products, overall, the total of single-family homes that are projected to be needed by 2021 is 440, excuse me, 444 homes, single-family homes for purchase. Of that, 444, 240 homes are projected to be needed in the price point of $240,900-plus. So with our proposed project, it's right in line with the proposed target needs based on the housing study that was recently done. So there is a need for workforce housing. In our industry, workforce housing term is very common, but it's really market-rate housing for anyone that wants to purchase a home in this area, with no income restrictions, and so it's just basically market-rate homes. The subdivision, we're calling it Norpark subdivision, and so that's where we're, you know, it's named after the Norpark industrial area, so we just kept the Norpark title. Timeline, we're trying to get this moved along, so hopefully, doubt probably this fall we'll get any dirt moved if we get through all the processes, but definitely in the spring, we definitely want to get going and get things started there. The funding, I'll talk a little bit about that at the end, as far as what we're looking at for funding. There's our experiences, can skip that, kind of went out of order here, but how we got here, kind of Mark alluded to the fact that we were able to have some discussions with Mark and other members of the foundation, of the Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation, and been great partners from day one since we started those discussions in February to put together housing subdivision here in the Norfolk community. Targeted population is basically whoever wants to purchase a home. Of course, we'll have covenants and guidelines on what we'd like to see in that area that 'll be coming down the road, and we're thinking mostly for homeownership, but if an investor wants to purchase a property or develop a property or build properties there for rental, that's entirely up to the property owner, what they want to do there. Location is just right north of the MPPD campus, so if you come off of Omaha Avenue on Chestnut, between New Core Detailing Center and MPPD, that's where the location is. Total 50 single-family homes that we're looking at building there, and we'll be adding some streets and lot layout, which I'll get into next. The homes, 22 attached and 22 detached, or 28, I think that's wrong, sorry, it's the other way around, 28 attached and 22 detached. No, never mind, sorry. The attachments are a town home environment, so that's why I'm gonna call them an attached unit, similar to what you see in the Meadow Ridge area. Estimated cost of infrastructure is 1.2 million. There's the partners listed once again, and we will be forming an LLC called Norpark Development LLC. There's a lot layout where you can see where the area is that we want to add the streets, the white lines are the proposed streets that we are looking at adding to this area. Coming off of Chestnut, off of Omaha Avenue or 275, going north to the property line there, going west to Bluff Avenue. The street in the middle going up and down, we'll be naming that Ferguson Drive in honor of our past board president, Joe Ferguson. And the bottom part is Michigan Avenue, which lines to Michigan Avenue to the left, so we're just gonna put that little stub there, Michigan Avenue. There's the layout, so Chestnut is on the right-hand side, that's where the attached units or the townhomes will be built. Then Ferguson Drive, there'll be the detached homes built on either side of that. That's hard to see, but the lots are 80 feet wide by about 105 feet deep for the detached, and the attached ones are 50 feet wide by 100 feet deep, is what we're proposing in our plat. The estimated square footage of the detached homes is between 13 to 1450 square feet, price point around 225 to 240. And the attached units, 22 of those, 1,200, 1,300 square feet, 190 to 210 value. These are our estimates, working with our partner, Progressive Builders. These are price points that he is at right now, has been building homes in that price point, so we'd like to see homes, you know, in this price point. We'll be selling these lots to all builders, it's open to any builder to come forward and buy lots and build there. So as far as what square footage and what their price point will be to each individual builder, but this is kind of what we're projecting we'd like to see in that area. The square footage would be somewhat controlled by the covenants that we'll be putting together, but we'll be looking at something in this size range. Now, we just have some photos of homes that have been built in this price range, some homes that we built in Columbus and some that Kelby has built in Skylar, as well as in Wayne. So if you just want to flip through some of those pictures, please, about. So not really a starter home, but just a nice home for a family, around the 13 to 14 hundred square foot. For the funding, partnership funding, obviously, all three of us are partners, we bring some funds to the table to put this together. As Mark indicated, we want this to be a community project, so we're looking at, as we move forward to coming back to you for seeking TIF financing on this, because as you move through your agenda tonight, that is one of the agendas for the redevelopment area, and this is in that redevelopment area that is part of the new plan and study. Also, we're looking at creating a loan pool. We, as Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska, have been in contact with all lenders here in Norfolk, and to this point, I have seven, and hoping to get the eighth one to let me know next day or two, to pull together a loan pool that we will have access to $400,000 from seven or eight lenders, and that is, I've requested 50,000 each at 0% for 10 years. So we'll use those funds for investing our part, in our portion, into the subdivision. The other two partners are coming with their own funds, but here again, since we're the local nonprofit organization doing development here in the Norfolk community, we want to work with the local lenders and investors to help pull this loan pool together, so it's a great support from our lenders as well to do that for us. There'll be no public funds or grants going into this. Once again, it's no income restrictions and fully market rate, because anytime you bring in any public funds or grants, and that restricts as far as your income levels and things like that, but that is not the case here. So we're using loan, our cash on hand, the loan proceeds, and to put this together, so that's where we're going, and as we move along, like I said, we'll be coming back to you for the TIF process after we go through the plating process, too, so. Glad to address any questions that you might have? Glad to address any questions that you might have?
Approximately how many homes a year?
We're estimating five to eight homes per year. Talked to some other people in town, lenders, realtors, they say that, you know, it could be built out in three, four, or five years, but that moves the number up, but we don't know that until we can see what, how soon the homes can be sold and go from there. But initially, we're looking at five to eight per year, and we really need the eight per year to help with the proceeds coming in for the increment in taxes to start making the payments on the TIF bonds.
Other questions for Mr. Nadrick?
I've got one question. I think, obviously, I represent Ward Four, and Thad, who's over there, does, too. We've been approached by different people in that neighborhood, and there are legitimate concerns. You've answered a few of those tonight, obviously, with the price of the homes. That was one concern, is what was going in there, and, you know, is there potential for R3 beside the R2 on that other land, just to the east there, you know? So those are concerns. I think the big thing, though, tonight, for myself and other people living in that neighborhood, you've got to realize, I think the last house built in there was probably 38 years ago. So this subdivision's been fairly closed off for, you know, 38 years. Bluff was never, never went through there. Now we're proposing to turn onto Bluff, and there's a legitimate concern there, because obviously, you've got two businesses there, free, you know, three with fairly decent amount of employees, and if you open a Bluff towards that end, is that going to cause not only the 28 attached or detached homes and 22 attached homes, which potentially could be 144 cars, to now enter just off of Bluff and be on Pazwalk and, you know, come in on Logan where there's a bottleneck, on Box Elder where there's a bottleneck, and what kind of impact that'll have? And lastly, would be what this means for the people on Bluff when it comes to the trail, because initially, that trail went in there because Bluff was a non-high-traffic street, and we wanted inlet so we'd get people onto the trail system without having to go Omaha Avenue or Norfolk Avenue. And so Bluff was kind of a way to do it without incurring a lot of cost at the time, just so we could, people could utilize their trails better. And now, would that mean for these people who live along Bluff, that they're going to have to pay for a sidewalk, you know, because some of those don't have sidewalks? Are we going to have to put in a sidewalk all the way along Bluff? So I guess as we're moving forward, I kind of feel like maybe the residents in that area, or even myself and Thad, didn't get a whole lot of, you know, input or thought process in this process, knowing what implications are going to happen in that neighborhood as far as traffic counts. I think, I think we all here agree that Norfolk needs homes, and you put together a great presentation tonight, so don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to, but there is a legitimate concern, and I don't think all those questions have been answered. I mean, just myself pulling out on Logan from that neighborhood, that area, every, in the mornings, on pulling on Omaha Avenue, it's, you can see cars down that backed up on Chestnut Street, backed up, and, you know, people are slowing down from 50 to 35, and it's just tough pulling out of there. So if you open the Bluff up, would that automatically divert people from even wanting to use that exit? Now we're, you know, so I think all these people sitting out here, and some of the, I know somebody, some of my neighbors over there, so I think these are things we've got to discuss and address. I mean, I feel like we're, okay, we're proving this, but we, without having this discussion, you know what I mean? I mean, we just got done talking about development for months about coming down 25th Street, and we were upset, we were worried about traffic on 25th Street. So I think, you know, there's, we need to have some of this conversation. If that means, is there a possibility of a light going in on Omaha Avenue? I know that state is a state highway, so that, that'd be something that had to come through the state. Would that help out, alleviate some of the pressure? I mean, I see where this is going, and, you know, this thing's going to make a turn with or without me or Thad and the people in the neighborhood, because, you know, they, we need housing, and I know you've got a ton of support with the community for this, but we're up here today saying, hold on a second, let's pump the brakes a little bit, and let's figure out what this means for the people in that neighborhood, so.
And I will inform you as well, this morning, we are, Kelby, myself, and our engineer firm did have a meeting with city staff to talk about if there are other alternatives as far as traffic and other connections, and so that's all being visited, and everybody kind of had some homework assignments to do and look at, you know, if there's a possibility of a stoplight there with the state and things like that. So there are some things in motion to start investigating and seeing if there are some other options to help the traffic pattern in this area.
Was there a timeline as to the answers to those questions that were in committee this morning?
We didn't put a timeline on that, did we?
Did not. I have had conversations with the Department of Roads, maybe we'll do a signal study at that intersection.
Do we have any past history that would indicate whether that would be up or down? As to, you know, I think they generally look at how many cars are going by there in a given period of time, so there should be some historical data that we would be able to project on?
I'm not aware right now if we have any historical data, because we're looked at that quite frequently.
Did we look at any other streets opening up besides that one, like Michigan?
I know at the Planning Commission public hearing, it was suggested by different parties to maybe look at Michigan Avenue or Grove Avenue, and, you know, we've looked at those, and from a developer's standpoint, it doesn't seem feasible to go that direction. But if that's something that the city would want to look at and doing something along those lines, then we'd entertain a discussion on that, but initially, I think we kind of ruled out those, too, as a developer of this land that we want to work with.
So five to eight structures a year. Where, where do you see the contractor traffic happening? Is that typically, do you, can you mandate that to come off 275? Can you?
We definitely work with contractors on that. We did have that discussion, our partners, about that, and, you know, Kelby, who's here in the audience, if he wants to come forward and address that as well. But as far as the contractor himself, he did not see that there'd be any reason that a contractor would be going with their equipment through Bluff Avenue when there's Omaha Avenue access, because the liability from a contractor going through their equipment and things like that in a residential area like that. So we did discuss that, you know, we can't monitor that, and, but obviously, when this gets moved forward and contractors can start working there, we, as the developers, would definitely encourage and have those discussions and requests of those contractors to use Omaha Avenue as their only in-way, in and out of the subdivision.
Thank you, Greg.
Kelby Herman Progressive Builders. If you have additional questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Part of the project, you asked about pace and speed of how the homes were going to be built. Mezner Development and myself anticipate investing about $1.6 to $2 million in spec housing to start the project. So those eight to 10 homes will be built in the first year, we'll be speculative to get the development going, and then after that, we'll kind of see what the market does. It would be our intention to do that every year, if necessary, to keep, to keep it moving and to get the lots filled as soon as possible. So that, that would be our intention, the first, you know, eight to 10 would be built by my company, and we could certainly control ingress and egress as far as subs and whatnot hitting south, so.
And even the other two partners, like he addressed, would be starting construction, but it's definitely open to all builders to come forward and build there.
Kelby, can I get you to sign in also, please?
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? Thank you. Maybe we're calling you back, so. Again, this is a public hearing. Ask if there is anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak at this time in favor of this proposed zoning change?
Good evening. I'm Cindy Morrow. I'm a longtime Norfolk resident, and I'm also the manager of the New Core Detailing Center. Our business property is just adjacent to the land in question. We are east and south of this tract of land. I remind you that it's currently zoned industrial, and we are asking and supporting the change to residential. There is a, there's a real need in this community for housing. I have met with the builders, I've met with Roger and his team, I've seen the plans, as you've seen them today. I think this is a very good use of this property. I think they, they know what they're doing, they're doing it well. I understand the concerns of the neighbors, believe me. I work, I, I work on Chestnut, I use that street every day. I think there will be an ongoing need. Currently, we employ about 150 people in the facility I work in. Over the next few years, we're going to continue to expand that. We may be as high as 250 in that building at some point. We need housing in this community. I would ask you to vote in favor of this zoning change. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jake Clausen. I'm the executive director of the Faith Regional Health Services Foundation, also work in physician recruitment. I would echo some of the comments that have been made already in support of this zoning change to add additional housing to this community. Faith Regional continues to add physicians, we continue to add staff at all levels of our organization. Our medical staff development plan calls for up to 50 new physicians in this community over the next three years. Just by hiring those 50 employees adds a multitude of employees across other levels through our organization, just as New Core, you just heard there, have plans to expand. We certainly have no plans to do anything but grow and continue to serve this great community. I'm sure there are other businesses as well who would echo growth plans, but all of us have the same fear, which is the lack of housing will greatly impact any workforce that we're able to add, and there's only so many people who will commute from other communities at a cost and expense to them and distance and time to our community. So we need to have people being able to locate here and, and serve us, not only in our organization, but in others. And so I would also ask that you strongly consider approving this zoning change to add more housing to our community and to make it easier for businesses at all levels to continue to attract and retain great employees. Any questions that you have for me? I would also be happy to ask. I should say answer. I think I might have said ask, sorry about that.
Ain't it a setup?
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Osborne, Norfolk Area Home Realty. And you've been getting a lot of numbers. I'm also on the board with Neighbor Works and on the board with Norfolk Board of Realtors, I'm a director there. One quick number I did was a seven-year study, and like, from $70,000 to $120,000, we sold 803 homes in those seven years. 121 to 220, 868 homes from the, from the target area that we're looking at. 221 to 250, only 106. Then the 251 to 350 goes back up to the 150 mark. So, so it does suggest, I know there's variables, but it does suggest that that's, that's a lacking area. And everybody knows what happens when one house sells. It just kind of keeps that ball rolling, spinning, and actually, I can't think of a better developer to do it than Neighbor Works. They've been giving to our community for years. So we need the homes. I understand all the problems with going up and down streets, and I sympathize with it, but we do need homes, and there's not, like Mark said, not very many places to have them. So, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of them, so.
Questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? If not, then I would open it up then, also, if you either want to speak in favor or in opposition, or if you just have questions regarding this proposed zoning change, I would ask you come to the microphone and voice your opinion, but I also need you to sign in with your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Mary Swenson. Apparently, I'm one of the speakers for the group, our neighborhood. We got a few questions answered, but Mr. Clausen has answered a lot of them. Our main concern is that street going through there. One of the guys took pictures on this today, and these streets aren't cared for back there anyway. They're shorter streets, they're smaller streets. This goes right onto the walking trail. This is the walking trail here. This is the ratty street, right there. All these streets are falling apart. And if you put more construction on there... 144 cars, plus, like they said, 250 for New Core, plus, I'm figuring that MPPD probably has at least 100 to 150 people there. They're not going to go onto Omaha Avenue. That street's hard enough to get onto. You go to the post office over there, you go to pay MPPD, pay your bills and stuff like that. It's not easy trying to get out on there. These people are just going to take this street. Bluff Avenue, as you can see, is a smaller street. It's got to go, I don't understand why they can't go to Michigan. I don't understand that. Is it just because of the factory there? The post office? They've got to worry about the post office, or they've got to worry about MPPD there, that fence? I've gone up that alley to look at that. We need more than that one. Pazwalk Avenue is a snow emergency, but that doesn't even get most of the snow emergency out of there. We're still four-wheel driving out of that corner. The snow removal in that area, we're worried about that. We're worried about the easements on the houses that are already there. Some of the neighbors have worried about that. I just don't understand why it can't go there. Is it in, still in a floodplain? That's another question. Has a floodplain been out of there? Because I live across the street from, I live on Willow, and when I first bought the house 29 years ago, it was still in the floodplain. We had to worry about insurance and stuff. It's right next to the river. I can't understand how it can't be in a floodplain. That hasn't been really answered on us. Who's going to be paying for these streets? Like I said, we can't get the ones there. Any given day, you come on, off of Pazwalk, onto Box Elder, onto Bluff, you're going to see 10, 10 kids playing around there. You're going to see kids around the neighborhood playing all around there, and it's, these kids aren't in their houses on their machines and on their books and stuff. These kids are out playing. Logan, on any given football night, that's going to be, oh my God, that's going to be terrible, too. Logan Street is not set up for that, for that traffic. Bluff is definitely not set up for the traffic, and Pazwalk is, it's going to be hard to get it through. And you're expecting all these 144 cars to come out of there. And I just don't understand how it's going to work. That is our biggest... That is our biggest, biggest issue. I know that we've got, we need jobs, or we need to get jobs in here, so therefore, we need the housing for the people to come in for the jobs. I've talked to several people at work also, and you know, they say that they can't find a decent house to rent or to buy. But you know, you look around and stuff, and there's all these empty lots around this town. And you're going to put 50 of them right there in that one spot, all within two, three years, whatever. And I haven't seen, we haven't seen a picture of the duplexes. Are they going to be tall? Are they going to be one-story? I haven't seen a picture of any of the duplexes on here either. So, and the duplexes are right along the river. And as I said in the, and where they want to change the R to R1 or R2, I've seen rope swings in that river already. It scares me to death that all these kids are going to have that extra access while their parents are in their house. Any of these kids, you can see going on the walkway, their parents are right behind them. You don't see the kids going in towards the river. But I have seen kids, I have seen some, a rope swing out there before, and it scares the daylights out of me. So worried about some of the safety around there. Worried about, you know, the kids and stuff, and the traffic. And you can't make promises on where them construction trucks are going to go through. They're going to go down Bluff Avenue to get for lunch downtown, or over onto Pazwalk. All they have to do is junk pound to Pazwalk, they got two roundabouts to go to, and they got Burger King, McDonald's, any fast food store you can find. So they're going to go that way, they're not going to go to Omaha Avenue. So how many traffic, how many of them big construction trucks or whatever are going to be coming up here?
There is a picture of the duplexes.
So we're just very, very, very concerned about that. A lot of the issues going on as far as this building, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Questions, comments from the council?
You know, I grew up in that neighborhood, and that might have been my rope swing.
Probably the guilty bird.
He did used to swing out over that river and back. We were kids, but...
It doesn't look that old. I'm sorry.
I thought, I could have said that, then I would have agreed with you. My...
I mean, it looks old enough, it looks kind of rickety, but it's not, it's...
We were over by a dare when we did it, we weren't right behind there.
Okay, all right, okay. So thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay.
Other questions or comments from the council before I ask for other input?
I would... Could we get our Public Safety Director to, Shane, can you come up and put you on the spot for a minute or two?
Yeah, we're still in a public hearing.
Yeah.
I want to, but I can't.
Well, would this be considered proper for a public hearing to ask a question of Shane?
Sure.
That's kind of what I thought. So we're going to have a lot of housing construction going on in our city, hopefully in the next five, 10, 15 years.
You bet.
From your perch in public safety, how would you, how would you answer some of the concerns of the citizens relative to what the developers want to do?
Well, I, can you regu...
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine, absolutely. Can you regulate where the construction traffic goes? Not from a law enforcement standpoint, you can't regulate that. You can regulate it perhaps through the developer and the subcontractors and relationship that they have with those folks to give them, you know, directives to use certain areas of access to any development that's going on in the community. That's probably the best way to do that. You know, but from a public safety standpoint, as far as enforcement standpoint, there's not a whole lot you can do, but you can do more traffic control, patrols and those kind of things. You know, if you're starting to witness a problem where we have speeding or illegal parking and those kind of things, it's something that the police department can react to and regulate and keep their eyes on, if that would be helpful for the neighborhood, just to make sure that the traffic is being accounted for and transversing that area safely.
Currently, you don't anticipate being short-staffed to do that? You have plenty of personnel and equipment?
No, I don't. I mean, we don't. We react, I mean, we're a growing community, and that's a great thing, and we react to those kind of traffic situations as they crop up and go about our business daily, so it happens in every single part of the town. And hopefully, it happens all over town as we grow, so it really doesn't depend on the neighborhood. We react according to the problems that were experienced or the neighborhood's experiencing at the time.
Thank you Shane.
You're welcome.
Shane, there's other neighborhoods that have limited entries and exits. Isn't like, I think Metal Ridge, they only have one or two? They only got two?
Well, there is, in particular, there is, as a development or an area town is starting to develop out, you know, that's fairly natural, you know. As Councilman Claussen described, this area's been not developed for 38 years or 30-plus years. But as any area starts to develop out into virgin land, you start to see those, you start to see those connectors, for lack of better, whereas the streets start developing. And for a short period of time, until the streets are built and the neighborhood grows, you see some increased traffic congestion. But as the streets start to be inlaid and the traffic starts to figure out their general direction that they're going to use every day, those usually are alleviated as the community continues to grow or the area continues to grow. But there are areas in town that, well, there's lots of areas all over town that aren't developed yet, that have dead-end streets, and you, as the area develops out, the streets eventually connect, and that usually causes the traffic concerns to go down.
You're welcome.
I'm Jane Kaler, and we own the home at 712 East Bluff, which is the very last house.
Don't let, I need you to make sure you sign in too.
I'll do that right now. Okay, I think I've got all the information there.
Thank you.
Anyways, we own the home at 712 East Bluff, which is the very last house. And I believe, my husband and I, you all received a letter from us with our concerns being at the last house and being on Bluff Street. After seeing what Norfolk Development is going to have for housing, they explained that at the zoning commission meeting. That part, my husband and I are not so much against, because yes, we do need housing in Norfolk. The part that we're definitely against is East Bluff being the access road getting to this housing development. The street is narrow. Right now, if cars are parked on both sides, the only way to get through is one car at a time, which is not a problem now because it's a dead-end street. You get a lot of these cars going on that street. It's going to be blocked traffic, because if there are cars parked on both sides, which some people need to, they don't have a lot of driveway. There will not be cars being able to meet each other on that street because of the narrow street of Bluff. I guess what we're concerned about is that if all this traffic comes in, plus there will be traffic from out-of-town people coming to the water park, football games, baseball games, that they may, once the word gets out that you can come off Omaha Avenue, go on Chestnut, go to Bluff, get in the back way to Water Park, that may be a place where other people from out-of-town may use that street also. So we're concerned about a lot of the traffic. The walking trail, which was put in within the last couple of years, excellent idea that they put that there. It's nice, it's a dead-end street, there's the walking park, walking trail, they can go on that, don't have to worry about the traffic. If you put Bluff straight through, it's going to be within a few feet of the walking trail. They'll have to cross over the walking trail to get to Chestnut. To me, that is not safe. Our son and his family live at that house right now, so we have grandchildren that we're concerned about their safety. They use the walking trail. People that my son have talked to that have used the walking trail since this was made public have mentioned, they like that walking trail, it's safe, they don't have to worry about their kids maybe running a little ahead because they don't have traffic. You put that, Chestnut, or put Bluff Street through, that's all going to change. I think there's going to be hazards, I think there could be a catastrophe, there could be a child injured. I don't want to see that. We lost a son when he was five. I know what it's like to lose a child, and I do not want anybody to have to lose or have a child injured because of this happening. Is there any questions?
I guess my question for you and for the residents in that area, because everything that I'm hearing right now is a supposition and assumption that very little of the traffic is going to go onto Chestnut and exit out onto Omaha Avenue, which I don't know if I totally agree with that. If there were something completed on Omaha Avenue, i.e. either a street light and/or, and I was not at the subcommittee meeting when they visited, total reduction in the speed on it. I really question why Omaha Avenue is 50 mile an hour through that area there. I understood it, you know, five, 10 years ago, but I'm not understanding why the reduction in the speed is only to 35 until, once you get to Industrial Street there. So if we were to encourage that and create that, you know, 35 mile an hour creates larger gaps there for access out onto Omaha Avenue, if that alleviated a considerable amount of that traffic, would your concern be as great?
I still think there would be a problem. There would be the housing, the people from the housing development that would come, because it's the access to come into Norfolk. Why go out on 275? Even if they do have slower traffic, they still, it's going out and around to get into town. They'll use Bluff more than likely to get into town because it's a closer access, like to go to Hy-Vee, the back way into Hy-Vee or whatever. I don't think it's going to alleviate that much to make it a way better deal to have Bluff open. It may help some, but I don't think it's going to alleviate the problem. I think there's still going to be a lot of traffic coming through there. Any other questions? Thank you.
My name's Sarah Fagner, and I'm one of the landowners that this adjoins to. And me and a couple of the other ones, me and Andy had talked before about this road that used to be behind our land, that you're not going to put there no more. Who gets that 30, or you're going to split that road up, who gets the 30 feet? Do we get 30 feet, and that other landlord or homeowner gets the 30 feet?
You say that road, which one are you talking about?
This used to be, because Andy said you're not going to build more alleys. And on the old map, there's a road behind us. Okay, and on one of my lots, there's a manhole also. Who, how do you access that manhole once you landlocked me? Because I own two of these lots.
Steve, this is when you're getting paid the big bucks.
The way land is abandoned, if that road gets abandoned, I believe that that 30 feet would be on your side, and so the adjacent parcels...
This line here doesn't show it.
If that 30 feet is on the west side of what you see as Willow Street? On the west side of Willow?
No. It's...
Is that... Mr. Chairman Dan?
Yes, please. Steve?
Is that platted now? Is this street platted? Because...
I believe that the piece that she's referring to is a planted parcel.
If it's, if that's the case, then when it's vacated, if it were to be vacated, then the city council in vacating it gets to decide whether some of the questions that you raise about if there's utilities in there or...
There is.
Or manholes or whatever, that street can be vacated, and the property can either be, there's a number of options. It can be retained by the city, it can be, it can be, it can be, go back to the property owner that it may have came from, when it was platted. It could be sold to somebody else. All of those are options which are really dependent upon, I think the one that you mentioned about the utilities is probably the biggest issue, what needs to be done in order to...
Yeah, how you going to, how you going to access this?
Well, the easements, if the street were to be vacated and there were utilities in there that were to be retained, there would be an easement that would be maintained for purposes of accessing the manhole or the sewer or the water line or whatever the case is. So unfortunately, the answer to that question's going to be largely fact-dependent. I don't know if we have the facts to answer that, but that's, hopefully that makes some sense.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
You're not getting my email address. I'm not going to hit you email me. I live on East Bluff Avenue, and you know, I was really concerned when they were wanting to put a development in there, just like everybody in the neighborhood back there. And after we seen the, after I seen the homes, I can't speak for everybody else, but after I seen the homes, I was very much at ease with what I saw back there. And I agree, Norfolk needs homes, and the homes all looked very nice, and the prices were right. I was a little concerned, I guess I didn't realize there were rentals back there. I'm not overly jumping for joy that they're putting rentals back there. I just assumed they would all be family homes, it would be a family home development. But regardless, a couple of questions I got, and actually, one question I got is, you know, we're a low part of town, and I don't, we haven't had any water issues, but there's still got to be sewage and drainage down at that low end of town, and I'm sure the engineers got that all figured out, but I want to make sure that that isn't going to be a backlash on the older homes, like the homes that we have in there. And you know, as they do all the new plumbing, hopefully, there's no repercussions as far as sewage coming up. And I thought Greg Prebe, at one time, he's the neighbor right across the street, had sewage in his house, and he's not here to speak for the group, I was going to ask him about it, that it came back up in his house. But it's never happened to us, and I don't think it's happened to too many people, but we just want to make sure that we just don't get, it's a low part of town. And where's that, again, I don't know how all that engineering stuff works, but we have concerns with that. And then, again, when it really rains, I talked about this last time, the streets really fill up with water, it just takes forever for it to drain out. The intersection on Box Elder and Bluff is just a pond. Cars will actually come through there, and the water's flying everywhere. Again, not a concern to me, because it's going to go down. But it gets very high, and so back in the new development, I think if we just got adequate, make sure we have adequate drainage for the big rains, we'll be all right. But there are drainage issues right now when we get the really big rains. I'm going to jump right back where everybody's talking about, that traffic coming down East Bluff Avenue. I've lived there, and I've lived there for, this is my 25th year, well, it's been 24 years. And I don't so much not like the development back there, because again, it doesn't bother me, because they're nice homes, but that traffic is going out to Omaha, and it's coming down East Bluff Avenue. And the developers, who've done a very nice job, and I know ill will against you, but his answer was, we'll look into it. And you guys are going to pass this tonight, or not pass it, by somebody looking into something. I would hope that we have some solid answers before you just say, let's put it in, because they did say we want to get started next year, which I would too if I had a business like that. I'd want that thing to get going. But let's just not pass this thing because they... they said they're going to look into it and we don't have any answers because that traffic is coming down our street. And believe it or not, I wish we had that big map up there. I don't know why we didn't take that Chestnut, you didn't take, they didn't take Chestnut, try to access that land to the north and connect that to Pazwalk, because Pazwalk is a main artery. People are going to come down Pazwalk and they got to turn either on Logan or they got, or they got to turn on Box Elder, jog over a block and then turn and go right past my house and probably 10, 11, 12 other people's houses. That's just going to be a traffic pattern. And it's just, it's ridiculous that we're going to load that kind of traffic onto a street like that. So again, I'm going back to that. We got to have better traffic coming out of there. I mean, that's that simple. And again, Omaha Avenue is a viable way out, but people are going to want to go downtown. They're going to want to go to ballgames. They're going to want to go, you know, you got the stores, the school. It's all catty corner and it's easier just to cut through the, through town.
You honestly believe they're going to want to cut through your neighborhood to get to Norfolk?
Oh, absolutely. The close ones...
Coming from coming down Omaha Avenue.
Bring the, bring, if we could bring that picture back up, I'm saying...
They're going to want to come down Omaha, Omaha Avenue instead of going to First Street and turning on a main artery. They're going to want to jog up.
I think, maybe go, I think coming into town, I think they're sitting in their, in their homes.
I, I understand.
And they're going to want to come in. I mean, I'm not, I'm just telling you, that's a concern.
Yeah, I understand. I do agree that there needs to be something done and not just Bob Street, but I don't believe that people are going to chug through the, the city to get to Norfolk Avenue.
Well, I'm not saying it's going to be nonstop traffic, but it's going to go up. And you got to, you live on a street for 25 years. We're concerned. I mean, so again, I don't, I don't not disagree with the development. I'm not trying to cut that up. I'm just saying, let's make sure we got some, some answers of some, some traffic. One street, it's one street coming into town. The rest of it takes you out to the highway. It's, you know, you got, you're teaching a 16-year-old to drive. What are you going to tell them? What are you going to tell your 60-year-old daughter when she's learned how to drive? Hey, go through town. Don't go out to the highway. I mean, you're going to bring, you're going to bring kids into, the kids are going to want to come through town. When they're going to head to the high school, let's cut through. They don't want to backtrack down past Nucor and NPPD. So anyhow, that's, that's my thought. That's, maybe I'm wrong. But that's my concern. You know, just, we're a low part of town. Let's make sure the, the drainage and the sewage and everything is, is up to snuff that there's no backlash on us. And again, it just would have been nice if we could have just had a couple more arteries out of that neighborhood. And so that's my, that's our thought. And so these guys, when they said they'll look into it, again, I wish they had those answers. You guys got to pass it one way or the other. But I mean, if I was going to do something, if I was going to build something for somebody and they said, well, what about this? And I'll say, well, we'll look into it. But you're going to let us go ahead and do it anyhow? That's my concern. So, any questions?
Not so much a question. I have a little clarification for you. The, you questioned the sanitary and the water coming up there. From experience, I know that there is sanitary coming from, excuse me, coming from Omaha Avenue that's meant to serve that area up there along with water.
Okay.
Because of our involvement with the development of, with NPPD and also Nucor Detail Center. But that, that whole piece of property is set up to tie into public utilities going to the south, so it shouldn't really have effect on your water and sewer concerns that you're...
Okay, and that's, and that's fine.
Yeah, it, it does go that way and it was set up that way when Greater Norfolk Development Corporation did that on. You can see the fire hydrants and stuff like that that actually walk back up into that area currently. So...
Well, yeah, that, if, if, as long as we don't have issues, I mean, I'm okay with that. And as long as they've looked at it and it looks like they probably have, I'm sure they have, but I just want to be sure about it. But again, that's our thoughts and concerns. And then one last thing, the flood control there, they're, they're kind of speaking on the safety issue and that, that flood, or the Norfolk coming through town. It is a lazy little river, pretty safe, but I ride that trail. I mean, when, when it rains, I like to go back there and see what's going on. When that water's up, it's up. Anybody gets caught in there, they're going to get caught in that siphon. That takes them right down to the flood control and it's going to be a, you maybe better look at putting something over by, by that, a screen or something. It's going to be a danger zone when that water's up, because it's going to pull anybody who gets in right down to that siphon. That takes them into the flood control. So just a thought, something to think about. But again, development don't bother me now that I've seen the homes, but the traffic does on the one street that I live on. All right? So it's a concern. So thank you very much. No other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm, you know, just living in that neighborhood, like you were talking about, it's not so much for me, just people coming off 275, pulling in there and coming out. It's, it's the way Bluff works. See, Bluff turns into Lo, goes, drives into Logan. You stop at Logan and then you turn either north or south to go out to 275 or over to Omaha or Pazwalk Avenue. There's a bottleneck there. And then when you come down Pazwalk, it pretty much dead end, you know, you see where it dead end. Instead of turn to Bluff, you got to turn down Box Elder, which is kind of a, it's not a really well-equipped street for that because it jogs out, then you go back. Yeah, so it, so you can see why everybody who lives in that neighborhood is going, how are you going to put, you know, if you just do quick math on this, potentially with, if, if the detailing center grows, like you're talking, you could have just people making three trips a day, that's 1,182 cars, not including NPPD, that could potentially be coming into that neighborhood during the day, new from not the additional tra, the existing traffics that's there. So you're essentially changing the entire dynamic of a neighborhood that's been that way for, you know, his last house was in there.
And anytime you, I think you develop an area, you're going to change the entire dynamic.
You do, but you're, this is, this is, you're talking housing and industry. It's not just, if that was all housing, but you've got industry in there that has a lot of employees during the day, not just me going home at night. So I mean, so that's why you got to respect these concerns and say, we've got, what I feel like right now is we're, got the car to have the horse here. We've got, we got a legitimate issue that we need to discuss about traffic council, traffic concerns. And Pat and I have got to go to home at night and take phone calls and we can't answer the questions. Can't do it. With what I, what I have right now, I can't answer the questions on, is this going to, is traffic going to be a problem or this going to be a problem? Or can we do this? Can we do this? We just haven't got there. Now, this development is, you know, is a great thing for Norfolk. Trust me, and it is. The housing or the price of the housing's right. It's, it's not going to lower people's property values. In the long run, if we can get this worked out on traffic, probably going to be a good thing. And it won't be as, it won't be as invasive, invasive as it all feels right now. But we haven't had those discussions, you know?
Well, I think if you look at it, I think there's a way to bring Pazwalk into it. I think there's a way to bring Michigan into it.
Well, they've tried to bring Pazwalk into it and the owner of that property doesn't want to deal with it. So, and I, and I'm not wrong when I say that, I could, but...
That property didn't tell me that he, he would not necessarily...
So Pazwalk would be ideal, just like Pat talked about. Pazwalk would be ideal because that's a through street and you get people off of Bluff, but... What's that? You can't tell people where to drive, but if we could like, like... Oh, I don't know. I don't know that. That's not something that I could tell you. But I do, Jim's right too. There, if we could, if there was good talks with the state, you know, that 50 to 35 people, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else, when I'm driving on Omaha, I slow down when I get to First Street, you know? So when you drive past Logan, you're clipping along and it's hard to turn out there. And you go to the post office, you know what that's like, turning out there. So naturally, if you're in that area and you want to get home, you're going to take the path of least resistance. So if there's a way to reach out to the state, which we talked about, but we don't have those answers yet. So I put you in a, puts, puts, you know, tough situation.
As were, excuse, excuse me, I, I need you to use the microphone if you could, please.
Jim, just a quick question. Roger said there's a...
Coming to use the microphone and I want to do the question.
Um, I guess there would be somebody else talking about that. I don't need it.
Okay.
Marty Wollers.
Okay.
Yes.
Need you to state your name and address. I missed telling a couple of...
Marty Wollers, 804 Dare Road. I own the property on the north side of Bluff. And I always use shortcuts. And I'm sure most people here use shortcuts. I would think you use shortcuts. The, the traffic is a big concern. And, but one of my bigger concerns, I guess, when this all came about, I was contacted, I'm not much of a public speaker, but maybe four weeks ago by Andrew Colvin, he called me on the phone, explained what was going on. And he stayed in contact once a week approximately. And, and then, then he was like, well, we kind of need a, need an answer because we're going to be voting on this. And, and saying, need it pretty soon. Said, well, okay. Then the answer is no. If you want to do that. So then Roger, he called and we met the week before, well, the Saturday before last, he came by. We visited and, and they do have a, a nice subdivision. It all looks good. He asked me when I would have an answer if they could use my part of the property for Bluff Street. And I told him probably by the end of the week, I'd contact my attorney, go over things. And then Monday, he calls and says he needs a, a written agreement Tuesday morning by 11, by 11 a.m. I'm like, well, okay, you want to pressure me? Okay, no. So, end of story. So that's the luck I've had with them. They're, and there's no, no answers to anything. They've not done any studies on this traffic. They're trying to rush it through and I just, I don't agree with that. I think you bring up a lot of legitimate concerns. I do have a, you know, there's a, along the trail, there's natural, there's trees along there. They, they have agreed to transplant trees if, if I need, need to, which is fine, but nothing in writing, you know? I'm not going to sign off my property for, sure say, you know, yeah, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Nothing in writing. And they just, they want it done spur of the moment. And that's not how I operate. I don't think any of you do. So, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily like the idea of Pazwalk. That's right in the middle of my property. I have a nice piece of property, nice piece of property. And I certainly, okay. So Andrew Colvin, when he talked to me about signing off on this, he goes, we need an answer. I said, no. So he said, well, just for your FYI, if you don't sign this, the city can go in and put Pazwalk through and run a ride to Chestnut. I'm like, okay, so that's how we operate? I'm just telling you the facts. I'm not happy about it at all. And I think they expressed my cooperation in the last meeting. No such thing. So... I don't know. Any questions, I guess?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak or Keltman Fals, you said you had noticed somebody?
Kind of answered my question. I was going to ask, that land that Roger said we could use to go through Pazwalk, if that's a better way, why aren't we looking at that? He kind of answered that with his property, but, you know, it's either Bluff or, or Pazwalk. You know, we got to make a decision. So I was wondering what the holdup was on that piece of land. So, kind of got the answer.
Again, this is public, okay. Roger?
I would just, I guess, remind you of what on the table today on the agenda is the zoning change. You know, the preliminary plat has been, the draft has been put together. That's part of our meeting this morning with the engineering and other city staff was to talk more about the details of the plat. That's to be, to come forward, you know, later if, if you move this along with the zoning change. So just to let you know that, you know, there's definitely more discussion to be had about the plat and, and the street layout and things like that and with all property owners that are involved in this. So, you know, that's where we're at today from our organization, from our partners that were requesting the zoning change today. That's all.
Okay. And thank you. I, I was remiss in reminding them about that as we were getting off into the platting sub-development and stuff like that. That, that is not the point of this meeting. This, this meeting and this hearing is strictly a zoning change request. And so it's, it's a reflection of whether we want to see a continuation of the I-1 and the smaller parcel of R-1 in there, or if we would rather see R-2 development in there. It, it is not to deal sadly with the streeting, with the streets and/or any other layout at this point in time.
And, and there will be time for all those to be explained when we get to that point?
Yep. If you remember the course of all, every development runs that same route, is that if you have to do a zoning change, you do the zoning change. And then we see plats and those items. And so again, as Mr. Natriko pointed out, and I was remiss in keeping us on track that way, that this is a zoning change meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm as well. I'm glad you brought that up. It sounds to me like in all the discussion, everybody realizes that housing is very important. And we, we're going to be dealing with not only this one, but more to come. The question is the zoning and I personally think that, that, that zoning is, changing that zoning is appropriate, but I also feel as though, as Shane pointed out, you folks have pointed out too, there's some great concern as to how that traffic can be regulated. And I think it, it's going to have to be regulated. I'm very interested to find out what the, what the state's going to say about changing the speed limit, about putting a left-hand turn signal on Chestnut onto 275, to try to, to try to take care of those particular issues. So, but like Jim's pointed out, the issue tonight is zoning, not necessarily the development.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. I would again ask if there is anyone who wishes to speak, either in favor or opposition, or who has questions regarding this zoning change. Do you have a planning commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 8, 2017, at the request of Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation, Inc., to consider a zoning change from I-1 light industrial to R-1 single-family residential and R-2 one and two-family residential, no, to change the zoning from I-1 and R-1 to R-2 one and two-family residential on property located at and around 601 East Michigan. The Planning Commission recommends approval on a seven to zero vote with one abstaining.
Okay, seeing no further testimony at this time, then I would like to close this public hearing and move us then over to item number 25 on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance number 5488 approving a zoning change from I-1 light industrial and R-1 single-family residential to R-2 on property generally located at and around 601 East Michigan Avenue.
I'd make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5488.
Okay. Is there a discussion?
What kind of timeframes are we looking at? Just, I know that we're talking about zoning, but any zoning thing I've ever worked on, we've, we've talked about ingress and egress into those places also. So I do feel like this is legitimate discussion. And I want to thank these guys that put a heck of a plan together here for our city and all the hard work you put into this. It's, it's good for our community, but there, the legitimate concern is there. And, and what kind of timeframes we'd be looking at so we can have some answers for the people, for us who live in that neighborhood and, you know? So, you know, because it's hard for me to be on board, all the way on board with something when I can't answer questions. I just can't do it right now with what we're, with ingress and egress concern.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. And I think we can address a lot of those questions. Am I on?
Should be up.
Yep. And I think we can address a lot of these questions. And I think we can address a lot of these questions. Uh, you know, there was a few that, um, might need a little more clarification, particularly one of them where we had why not Grove or Michigan, weren't those looked at? Um, I can get some thoughts on it, just looking at it from a high level, but without getting into that a little bit more to get some more answers on, on why not those. Um, and I think we've seen, you know, why not Pazwalk and some of those other areas. I think some of those to a degree have been answered tonight a little bit. Um, and as far as the state, Department of Roads and where that would sit with, you know, any changes to the access or speed limits on to, to Omaha Avenue, uh, you know, those would also be some questions. I don't know timeframes on those. Steve might have a little bit more idea on, on where you can go with that. Um, but I do think we can get a lot of questions answered hopefully by the time, you know, depending on what you would do with the first reading, by the time you would get to the next reading. Um, and we, and we can do what we can to get some, some more information back.
So any other discussion or comments? Again, I'd like to remind this body that this, this is a zoning change issue at this time. And even though we talked about, you know, ingress and egress for residential changing that way, um, as I look at this, the, the changing to a less dense and a, um, more compatible, uh, situation, especially right in that, that area, I see this, this zoning change as being a, a win for everyone, including the residents in the area. Otherwise, I would call for your vote.
Council members present voting in the affirmative. Langy, Granquist, Merrill, Jackson, Faust file, voting against the ordinance on first reading. Clausen and Murin, motion carries.
Okay, that will bring us in to, um, item 26 on the agenda. It's a public hearing to consider a blighted and substandard declaration for the area generally located along East Omaha Avenue and referred to as the East Omaha Avenue redevelopment area. And I guess I would look to you or, oh, Jan, we get you back. But you're not on my list here.
Oh, wow. I'll do this one too. So the City of Norfolk requested that Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District complete a blight and substandard study on the East Omaha redevelopment area so that STIF can be used as a redevelopment tool. The Nebraska Community Development Law identifies six substandard factors and 16 blight factors to look for in a blight and substandard study. I have identified that there are three substandard and six blight factors in this area. The three of the substandard are also the same as the blight. So, um, the existence of defective or inadequate street layouts, the development of agricultural land has been inhibited by the lack of established public streets and sidewalks, unsanitary and unsafe conditions. Um, the presence of abandoned vehicle debris plus deteriorating sidewalks, ramps, streets, curbs, alleys located within the study area, uh, creates unsafe conditions for pedestrians and vehicle traffic. Uh, deteriorating site or other improvements. There is a presence of inadequate sidewalks for pedestrian travel. Construction waste is, um, accessible to the public and debris stored outside adjacent to structures. There is a substantial number of deteriorating, um, structures of the 600, there are 608 structures of the 795 that were given a rating of either fair, poor, or dilapidated based upon signs of deterioration of the structures. This accounts for 76.4%. The existence of conditions that endangers life or property by fire or other causes. The average age of the structures in the study area is over 60, or 73 years. So the existence of aged flammable material, deteriorating electrical systems, inadequate roofing, old wiring, and faulty heat systems increase the potential for the threat of fire. The average age of residential and commercial units in the area, the qualify, is a qualifying condition if it's the average age is over 40 years. There are 422 commercial and residence structures, uh, within the study area which have dates of construction listed at the Madison County Assessor's Office. And the average age of the structures in the area is 73.49. So having met the substandard and blight conditions as defined by the community, Nebraska Community Development Law, the study has been determined that the East Omaha Development Area is both substandard and blighted. Um, we did send out 355 letters to property owners on July 27th. We have received approximately 20 requests for additional information by either phone or visiting our office. We addressed each of the residents' concerns and, um, and we did, we answered all their questions. And there really wasn't anything once they understood what the process was and why we were doing it.
What, just one of the questions maybe good to get out there is, that I get from people is, what's this going to do to my property value?
That was a question that absolutely was asked a lot. And it does nothing to, um, to harm your property value. And people do be concerned and it's because it's blighted and substandard.
And I, I think that's the biggest, when people don't understand that, they're saying, well, my property isn't up. Well, the county assessor doesn't say that, uh, I, my business is in, within this area. Hasn't stopped them from raising my value.
Good point. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jan. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to this item as this is a public hearing? Not then, I would ask, you got them?
Yes.
Okay, there's a planning commission report, I believe, on this.
The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the blight and substandard determination study for the area referred to as East Omaha Avenue Redevelopment Area on August 8th, 2017. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the declaration of this area as blighted and substandard on a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. There any other discussion? Not, I would like to close the public hearing at this time and then move to agenda item number 27, consideration of resolution number 2017-58 declaring the area generally located on East Omaha Avenue and referred to as the East Omaha Avenue Redevelopment Area as blighted and substandard.
I'd offer for consideration, resolution 2017-58.
It's been moved and seconded that we consider resolution 2017-58. Is there any discussion by this body? Not, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2017-58 is adopted.
Okay, that's moving us into, uh, item 28, which is a public hearing regarding the redevelopment plan for Meddleslake and redevelopment area. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there was someone who wants to speak to this.
I'm Jimmy Cox. I represent the redeveloper on this project and I'm just here to answer any questions y'all might have.
Questions for Mr. Cox?
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Okay, seeing no others, we have a planning commission. Okay, I'd like to close this public hearing and then move on to item 29, which is consideration of resolution 2017-59 approving the redevelopment plan for Meddleslake Redevelopment Area.
You want to offer up resolution number 2017-59?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we consider resolution 2017-59 for the redevelopment plan. I think we've seen this, uh, a number of times and, um, and both the rate at which they're planning on doing it and, and bringing a parcel into the city area that I, I can't but imagine it's going to help also along with our housing needs that way. Any other discussion? If not, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2017-59 is adopted.
Okay, then that brings us into the, uh, regular agenda. And item 15 was, uh, put onto the regular agenda. So going in chronological order, I would like at this point in time to ask for consideration of resolution 2017-56 approving the final plat and subdivision agreement and post-construction stormwater management plan, maintenance agreement, and easement of Fountain Point addition. Can I get somebody to make a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Val, I've got you down on the list here speaking, or Steve speaking to it, okay?
This change has to do with the subdivision agreement, specifically page five of that, uh, under item five sidewalk rail improvements and part eight, 37th Street. In discussions with the developer on that, as we talked about the sidewalk or rail on 37th Street, we were both silent, I guess, on how that rail was going to get from Madison or from Highway 275 to, um, to Madison. And their interpretation of that discussion was that it was the sidewalk would start at Madison and go south to Lot 3. And our interpretation of our discussion was it would start at Highway 275 and go south to the south side of Lot 3. Um, we spoke to the developer this afternoon. Uh, when we noticed that we had each interpreted that differently and they agreed that it should go from 275 south. So we're just making that change.
Okay. Questions for Steve? Not? Any? Okay, we have a planning commission report on this?
The Norfolk Planning Commission, uh, reviewed the final plat of Fountain Point addition on August 8th and recommends approval of the plat on an eight to zero vote.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to this before I close this public hearing? We will close the public hearing at, oh, that's not a public hearing, excuse me. Goofed up there. If there's no further discussion, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2017-60 is adopted.
Okay, that brings us in to item number 30 on our agenda, which is consideration of resolution 2017-60 approving the final allocation of the levy authority of the Norfolk Airport Authority for fiscal year 2017-2018, allowing the Norfolk Airport Authority to levy a property tax of $640,460. I need somebody to, okay. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Just briefly, just briefly, Dan Gary is my name, chairman of the Norfolk Airport Authority, and this is Terry Walker, the, um, airport manager. Um, just real quickly, our budget is basically the same this year. The increase reflects a two and a half million dollar sewer project that we have going on. So, uh, the FAA supplies 90% of the funds and we as a community have to, have to supply 10% of the funds. So the project is approximately 2.3 million plus, uh, um, engineering and other fees on top of that. So that's what's in our budget. Uh, Terry will give you a, a little report on daily operations. On our hangar rentals that we have, out of our 49 hangars, we have 45 of them that are rented. That's about 92%. Um, on our fuel sales, um, what we projected, our, our estimated fuel sales are above, just a little bit below last year, but we have taken consideration the cost of fuel is lower than it, than it was. Our gallons are probably up just a little bit. I do not have those figures added to date, but we are showing an increase in sales. Um, we had a big event this summer when we had our airshow and it brought a lot of people to the community that stayed in our local hotels and, and bought food here and, and bought lots of gasoline. Um, annual Oshkosh AirVenture Days, we saw an increase of about, in a, about a 10-day period, about 60 aircraft visited our airport and bought fuel and also stayed in our, and, and bought things in our community. Um, I would also like, also to comment on what Cindy Morrow said and Jake Clausen said about, um, the need for housing in the area, for the medical personnel that are coming to town, the businesses that are coming to town. The airport is a big asset in making those negotiations and having them come here. So with, with the storage sewer project, which is underway, we are replacing a pipe underground that's been there for 75 years. So that's, that's what's going on with that. So I guess about, I don't really have anything else to report on at this moment. Any other question?
I just want to say, I appreciate you guys coming in and giving that explanation. Um, had it not been a $640,000 question on the consent agenda, it probably would not have gotten slid over. But that's a pretty, pretty good sized number to have on consent and I really do appreciate you. Well, yeah, we, we certainly do. But thanks a lot for, it's been a long meeting and I appreciate you guys hanging in here and giving everybody an explanation.
Other questions? Any further discussion? If not, would you please vote?
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2017-60 is adopted.
Yeah, it brings us to item 31 on the agenda, which is consideration of approval of software and services agreement, statement of work and business association agreement with the Pulse Point Foundation to provide the hardware and software to implement the Pulse Point app within the community of Norfolk. A lot of P's there, so, uh. I get a motion, please, on that?
I'll make a motion.
We got discussion. You look like you were chomping at your, hung around waiting for us.
I'd probably use that app when Councilman Merrill called me up last time. Actually cardiac arrest, as, as everyone knows, is a serious thing. And, you know, we experience about 25 to 30 cardiac arrest events roughly a year here in River City, here in Norfolk and across the United States, there's about a thousand a day. So this app, and there's, as, as you would have it, there's an app for that now, um, at least to get some responders going and more than emergency responders, really the public. And get the public excited about, uh, going and, and first of all, learning CPR, learning how to use an AED, an automatic, automated external defibrillator, and knowing their location. And then if they're out in a public place, um, and they engage with this app that we're embarking on, they would get a notification that there's a cardiac arrest. So you're in Walmart or you're in ShopCo or any of the, anywhere in a public place in this facility and, uh, someone has a sudden cardiac arrest, those apps would go off in conjunction with our dispatch center. And you'd be informed of it as a layperson. And you'd be informed of it as a layperson that's trained, and you can respond if you so choose to do. Actually, this whole idea was, excitingly, was brought to us by a citizen of Norfolk. And it's just kind of a grassroots effort. And they brought it to the public safety folks, city of Norfolk, and they brought it, even more importantly, to Faith Regional and its foundation. And they're here tonight to talk about it too. I know Jake and his team is here. And it's been just a fantastic partnership, really. Folks getting excited about it, raising money for it. There's a big event last Friday that raised some more money for it and a lot of excitement in the community to get this app going. We're going to be the second city in the state of Nebraska to have it once we get it squared away here in a month or so. And we're going to get, get to running on it. So I personally am chief courtist, actually on our time off, two separate occasions, two different cities, I was in California, he was in Omaha, happened to not use the app, but happened to be in close, very close proximity to a sudden cardiac arrest. And we were both able to engage in CPR because obviously we're trained in that. And both had successful outcomes where the, where the person actually was resuscitated after, after we did our thing and the pros got there and the chain of survival went to the ER in two different locations and worked flawlessly with external defibrillators and the whole nine yards. So we could firsthand to it. So it's just kind of an exciting app for the city. And we're excited that we're going to get it going here. And it's going to pay dividends. And I think the, really the biggest thing it's going to pay a dividend is the awareness level. They have, they teach CPR, not necessarily different so much than they always have, but we have hands-on, hands-only CPR now. That was always kind of some, some folks out in the, in the public would be a little nervous about giving mouth to mouth. But the biggest key to successful CPR is actually do, doing the compressions and doing them effectively. Fast and hard is the, is the mantra that you live by when you're doing compressions out there. And they are teaching that now to do, if nothing else, just do compressions. And that's really where we're saving heart muscle and time is everything. So the quicker we can get somebody to do start compressions in a sudden cardiac arrest, the quicker we're going to have success. And it's proven a time and a time again out there in the field every day in the United States. So again, we're excited for it. And I think Jake, you know, if you want to make some comments from the Faith Regional and its foundation, it'd be great. We can go from there and answer questions.
Hello again, everyone. I would just really affirm everything that Shane said. It has been a real pleasure working with the city on this at a number of different levels. We are very excited to contribute in any way that we can as the regional referral center for this community and for Northeast Nebraska to contribute to the overall wellness of, of our community. And I think Pulse Point really does move us in that direction. We're really excited as a foundation to be a part of something that can have such a dramatic community impact. So on behalf of the Faith Regional Health Services Foundation, I hope that you will approve this going forward. We have raised all of the funds for the initial investment. So it's really just a matter of taking this next step and allowing us to utilize those funds that we've spent the last few months raising. And we're then, we're excited to be a part of the effort to implement it in this community. And, and again, really help to be a part of the solution and be a part of better wellness for all of us. Thank you. I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Guess I'd like to say thank you and all your teammates that have worked on this.
Absolutely, thank you.
I was listening to the radio Sunday evening as I was returning to town and they were talking about how so many of the population dread or will not take action on an emergency situation like this. And most of the time it was because they didn't know how to or they weren't aware of it. And I can see this as being something that will at least help alleviate or stem some of that fear and will ultimately save more lives, so.
I couldn't agree more. And as Shane mentioned, and not to belabor the point, but we at Faith Regional are also really excited that this will create more awareness and possibly more people wanting to get involved with learning how to do CPR, learning how to use an AED device. I'm very hopeful that many businesses throughout the community will decide, you know, we should have an AED in our business. And again, I think it only gets more exciting from here.
Questions?
Thank you. Yeah, thanks again for the time. I really appreciate it.
So any discussion? Not, I would like to ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
That Pierce brought us to the end of the agenda. I want to apologize for my first time that I've sit here for a long time and I did a two-hour meeting, so. But aside from that, at this point, we are adjourned.